They were looking for the door and I said.
I'll call a board of education meeting to order. And if you look at your agenda, we will do the pledge when we come back because the Washington volleyball team is going to be leading us in that. So routine, we sign into board book, Lori does the roll.
Christopher Abel. David Bowman.
Here.
Biff Hanson.
Here.
Ann Holson.
Here.
Mary Lofi Blonik.
Present.
Keith Shaw.
Here.
Carrie Trask.
Here.
Thank you.
We did get a text from Chris and he's having a little issue and he'll get here when he can. Hopefully he gets here before the end of the meeting. Okay, so I need a motion to go into closed session.
I moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Nope. All those in favor? We got a real call.
Oh, we do, yeah.
Chris is at here. David Bowman.
Aye.
Biff Hanson.
Aye.
Ann Holson.
Aye.
Mary Lofi Blonik.
Aye.
Keith Shaw.
Aye.
Carrie Trask.
So we are in closed session and we are moving to room five?
Yes.
Yes, yes. You'll see. And welcome to the 912 Public.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here.
Good, good. We're excited you're here. We learned over the last couple of years how important it is to get student perspective, so welcome. Very much appreciated. Okay, public input. We have one person wishing to speak tonight and Sarah Wyonberg.
Sarah. Sarah's not exactly public.
Sarah Wyonberg, president of the MEAD. I just want to thank the members of the board and the administration for making the beginning of the school year run so smoothly. Communication has been great over the summer as well as to the start of the school year. So thank you and I hope to continue the conversations with everyone going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Having all other applicants. That's it? Oh, I think she. Lori gets some. So at this time, we will look for approval of the consent agenda. You all saw that in advance, everything that was. So at this time, we will look for approval of the consent agenda. You all saw that in advance, everything that was on there, is there anything anybody would like pulled from the consent agenda? Anything? One more chance, anything? Say none. Do I have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda? A second. Shaw with a motion, Mr. Bowman with a second. Any discussion? All those in favor would say aye. Pose say nay. And the consent agenda is approved. At this time, we'll ask Lulu for the student report.
Okay. Hello, everyone. So, first things first, I just want to introduce myself. My name is Lulu Linboom. I am a junior at Manitowoc Lincoln, and I'm super grateful and excited to be here with you guys, and I can't wait to continue into this path. So, first of all, as you know, the school year just began, so like, a lot of clubs and extracurriculars, like especially at Lincoln, haven't started yet. They're gonna start towards the end of this month. However, sports have started yet, so I can give you a quick report on that. The football season started with an unfortunate loss to DePere, zero to thirty-eight. One week later, they played Ashwabanam, only losing zero to twenty. And just this past Friday, they played Oshkosh North, ending with a score of fourteen to thirty-two, finally bringing in some points thanks to player Roman Zack, who was awarded MVP for that game, having a interception touchdown com- combination.
He was fifth six.
Marking the first numbers on a scoreboard this season, but we are set to see an improvement, hopefully, within the next couple of matches. Manitowoc Lincoln has actually welcomed a new sport this fall, girls varsity golf. Members Briella Reeves, Olivia Dickey, and Vivian Polly have all shown growth in their skills and new PRs. Our girls volleyball team has had a great start to their season, having won seven out of nine matches so far. Cross-country has had a successful, has had successful meets, especially at the Two Rivers Invitational, where members Nora Free and Reed S. achieved SRs. That's really it as of like right now. As we continue through these next couple of weeks, more things will start up and begin, and more events will take place, and I'll be sure to inform you guys on those. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. Are you gonna be setting up a calendar again where the board members can check in and attend their meetings on a monthly basis or every other month? Is that calendar gonna be set up again?
Well, need to, is Mr.?
Mr. Paddle.
Is still in charge of Student Senate? We usually will send somebody to a Student Senate meeting once a month. So, I'll talk to him and see if we can set that up. I'm not sure.
Yeah.
And if, well, it's good to go listen. It's good to go listen to students' discussion.
Yeah.
It's, it's, like I've told many of you, it's amazing the difference in what students today think about as compared to what I did way back when I was a high school kid. It's more, you're just, it's, it's amazing the depth and knowledge of kids today, which we appreciate. Okay, Mr. Tennis, give your dinner report.
Yeah, and, you know, not to pile on for Lulu at her first meeting, but I had the opportunity to meet with her and sort of do an orientation, and just have to say how grateful I am for you being willing to give up your time and serve. It's a great opportunity, a great leadership opportunity for you. So, on behalf of the entire district, welcome, and you're gonna be great. And she's a junior, so, you know, she'll be able to hopefully stick her up, right? That's awesome. I'm also very pleased tonight to introduce Ms. Laney Longmire, principal at Washington Middle School, who has some guests with her tonight to do just a showcase on some programming that's happening at Washington that I know you're aware of, but it's really, this is, this has got two things, right? This is a nice piece of information for all of you, but this is also an opportunity for us to tell the community about this great program, because we'd like to see more kids involved. So, Mrs. Longmire, take it away.
I think I have probably the easiest job of tonight of just introducing three really awesome people and some key players and offering some really great opportunities for our middle school students, not just at Washington, but Wilson as well, actually. So, here to introduce Ms. Athena Martin, our Boys and Girls Program Coordinator at Washington, Carrie O'Connor, our School Counselor, and C-Tower Dean of Students.
Yeah.
Take it away, guys.
There's a picture up there.
Yeah.
I imagine, right, let's go, okay.
Oh, perfect.
There you go.
So, I'm the program, I'm the unit director at our program at Washington, Year Two. I was here last year for maybe some of you, but last year, I'll wait. I'll get there. Okay. So, our mission, just broad, Boys and Girls Club of the Fox Valley runs into Manitowoc, Manitowoc into Washington Middle School. So, our mission is to inspire and enable all young people, especially those who need us most, to reach their full potential as productive, responsible, caring citizens. We offer programming and offer space to create what we call the optimal club experience, healthy relationships, productive citizens, sense of belonging, safety, opportunity, overall positive, happy, good environment for students. Our programming runs Monday to Friday, three to six p.m., typically following the school's calendar. If there's not school, there's not club. Our big programs being Power Hour, which is their opportunity for homework, reading, support with staff through their homework, STEM, art, career readiness, which is a big push this year, social-emotional learning, Project Learn, and then Healthy Habits and Physical Rec. That's kind of the overview of our program. We're here and we're funded because of the CCLC grant. Last year, we had forty-four registered students. We saw an average daily attendance of like nine. We're open one hundred and sixty-two days, four hundred and eighty-six hours. There is also a local evaluation that we do for DPI that's posted online if anybody wants to do a deep dive in numbers and what our program offers and all the little details. This year, this is slightly out of date, we have thirty-two registered students. We're anticipating an ADA of forty-one to forty-five, which is what DPI wants to see. All our staff are returning this school year, so that makes a big difference when we're talking about that optimal club experience, growing the program, doing all that. We're currently hiring for one more staff, so we're slightly understaffed, but in an okay spot. New this year programs we're bringing into club to help grow their opportunities, grow the program. We're doing a Lake Shore First Robotics FTC team.
Oh, yeah.
I could not describe all the academics. It's robotics for middle schoolers. They like it. We're also running a torch club, which is a mini leadership council-type program in Boys and Girls Club. We also received light bulb funding from DPI to partially run that. We're running a lot of interest-based programming this year. It tends to attract more kids into the program instead of saying, oh, every Monday, we're gonna read a book and then we're gonna do this really cool project. We say, what do you wanna do? And how can we tie school and the learning into what you wanna see? And we're doing more of that this year, so every day, Monday through Thursday, they have an opportunity to join a club within Boys and Girls Club. This year, we also have our own room, which is very helpful. The feedback we received last year was that the garden level
Yeah.
was maybe not the best space for us and didn't get the most exposure and all that. So, this year, we're upstairs, we're using the library, we have our own classroom. The kids seem to really enjoy the space. And then, doing the super snack food program through Chart Wells this year has been going really well so far. Some partnerships we're holding from last year into this year that are reoccurring, 4-H, they come on a monthly basis, the kids really enjoy their STEM programming, that they come and do, the Manitowoc Public Library comes once a month. She usually brings art projects and games. Lake Shore First Robotics, and then the Manitowoc Police Department are main partners.
Who was the last one?
Manitowoc Police Department.
Oh, okay.
This is, I think they can see it, a little snapshot of kind of what our month in a nutshell looks like. I call it my pretty calendar. It's not everything. We offer probably like eight different programs every single night in the span of three hours. But this is just like an overview of what the kids wanna see, parents, community members. This is kind of an overview of what we offer in a given day. These are some quotes, I'm not gonna read them. These are some quotes.
Would you read them? Because I can't quite read it.
Okay.
From here, from here.
So, Maria last year said, I mean, club means a lot to me. Christopher said, my favorite part about club is the staff. And Julia said, I've been coming to club for over a year and it's probably the safest option. These are little snippets of many more words that they said. Out of context. That's what I have. Anyone have any questions?
Can I ask who the robotics has teamed up with? Is that a staff member or is that a community?
So, we are taking it on, and by we, I mean me, I'm taking it on. With help from Lake Shore First Robotics, they have a Lincoln team that comes and helps us on Tuesdays. And then, we have some caregiver, parent, volunteers that come in and help us, because robotics is not a thing. But with all their support, it's turning out to be successful so far. And then, Washington does have a robotics team already started, the Robo Wolves. But their team kinda capped out last year, so we are supporting that to make sure that no students are without that opportunity.
Excellent.
Competing against them. Yeah.
So, my understanding is this is gonna start or is already also started at Wilson? Or do kids get tracked over to you?
So, right now, our program is simply open to anybody in the Manitowoc area. It's open to Wilson kids. We don't have any direct transportation or support line there. Not saying it's not possible. But right now, it's just kinda simply open to them. We do have some kids for the robotics that come from other schools. We have one from Wilson, one from Emmanuel, and then three home-school kids that come to Washington to participate in that.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Are there referrals of students that really need, really need this program? That are, that are encouraged to, you know, get on board?
We have a referral form, so if teachers or staff members at the schools or whomever feels a student would benefit from our program specifically, they can fill it out, and then I will reach out to their caregiver and that student to work on getting them registered and signed up for the program and get them attending and, yeah.
Yeah, but counselors couldn't, you know.
Yep, so coming.
Make a strong suggestion in some cases, huh? Yeah?
Yeah, absolutely. Coming from our SEL lens, it's a really a wraparound service we can provide to our families and students.
Yeah, it sounds, it sounds like it'd be extremely helpful, and, you know, kids may not know how to succeed, but, you know, this is a, this is an opportunity for them to be encouraged to think about that.
I think if there's an ask from all of you is to spread the word about Boys and Girls Club, because we have so much room to grow, and I, the more I burn each and every week, the more I realize that our community should be taking advantage of this, to have wraparound care from school at that middle school level from three to six, engaging and safe. I mean, really engaging, learning-focused activities at no cost to families is a pretty cool opportunity for our area. So, please.
So, it's also, is also, obviously, it could be social too, which
Yep.
would be good for them, you know.
Congratulations, you guys. What a great, what a great staff to set this all in motion. Way to go.
Appreciate it. Anything we can do to help students is.
Thank you very much.
Thanks so much for being here. Obviously, as it was referenced earlier by Sarah, we had our, of course, our kickoff and start of the school year, which has gone fantastic. We've had some feedback from buildings that it's been a good start. I wanna thank our building principals again for all their work to, one of the specific comments that I've heard that, that's been a good job of not only developing, but communicating expectations. And I know that our, and I know there were questions earlier on about like, how's the cellphone policy? Like at, at Lincoln, and we have a student here, how is the cellphone policy?
Oh, yeah.
Or not please?
Are they following the policy?
Um, there's some, some are. Some are sneaking through the cracks.
I see.
Not please, huh?
Yeah. So, there, there has been few, in terms of being caught anyway, maybe that's a tip for us, but that, that there have been only a few instances where there have been students who've had to be addressed in regards to their phones. I've talked to two or three of teachers up at Lincoln who have independently told me that they're seeing more social interaction with the students. For example, during their homeroom time, in the past, it might have been, oh, the few minutes before things start starting, they're, you know, probably on their phones. Now, they're talking with each other, right? So, all is, all is good there. And I just wanted to thank not only all of our administrators, but all of our professional staff and support staff for all of their dedication to really making sure that the year started well. I was able to be in every school last week. I got to see some smiling and scared kindergartners walk into their school for the first time at Monroe, which was really kinda special, actually. I've never, actually, in my twenty-five years in education, I've never got to see kindergartners on the first base school, and that was very neat, so. Couple of other things real quickly, just to highlight, obviously, you have my written report, but of course, we have a very important meeting coming up this Thursday at UWGB with our combined staff and community facility advisory teams that are meeting with, again, remember, we have our owner's rep from Cadence Consulting, Mr. Hacker, who's been facilitating all these conversations. The goal of our meeting on Thursday is to develop a presentation with recommendations that are actually combined and supported by both staff and the community or groups that have been meeting, that they can come to you at the end of next month, at the end of October, to do a presentation, a special meeting in regards to their recommendations about our district moving forward with our facilities footprint, but also looking at the alignment of our grades and, and our instructional approach with kids. So, we're very excited about that. We're getting in, nearing the end of our work. We're a little ahead of schedule. So, we're very excited about that. In addition, I just, you know, this is something I guess I'm technically doing as a citizen, but I have joined the Board of Directors. You know, I'm pretty passionate about making sure that all kids have opportunities to learn and grow, especially kids who not only are just in our school system, but also when they leave here. And send us some pretty great things, and I know there's been some federal funding issues and all those sorts of things. So, when I was approached, I thought it would be a nice opportunity for me to get involved, and perhaps I can be a conduit to help provide some more opportunities for our kids moving forward. Also, recently presented on August twentieth at Progress Lake Shore Board Meeting, where I was able to share our strategic vision, culture of excellence, and an update on our facilities plans with that group. And we will be, Lori and I will be at Retro on eighth on Friday, September twenty-sixth, for the third edition of our, well, technically, fourth edition of our Coffee and Conversation. Been having anywhere from seven to nine citizens at each one, and it's been a great opportunity. Even people who haven't come, I, I received a phone call the other day after being on, be my guest, from a lady who. be my guest, uh, from a lady who probably isn't coming, but just made a comment that it's important for the school to, to be in conversation and have collaborative opportunities to meet with citizens. Um, I basically tell them, we can talk about anything, so, um, those have been going really, really well. Um, lastly, I'll just share, um, and I think this is a celebration for the district, um, on September twenty-second um, at the Fall Chancellor's Dinner at UWGB. Um, I have the opportunity to do a keynote, uh, speech around the impact of the Rising Phoenix Program uh, on the community of Manitowoc, but also on our school district and our kids. Um, to which I'm very excited about because I also did a presentation to the Curriculum Committee in regards to some very impressive data that we have to share about the success of our students. And I know that there's been a narrative out there, you know, and, and we, we fully admit, we know we have some work to do in terms of our achievement gaps. Um, but what I will tell you is that this is also academic data and it's the academic data that we're very, very proud of. Our kids are earning, uh, college credit and they're doing so, uh, and they're, they're being successful in the program. Their completion rates are very high. The grade point average is excellent, um, and we're just very, very proud of our kids. Um, twenty out of twenty, twenty-one out of twenty-one, twenty-four out of twenty-five, and twenty-five out of twenty-five. Our kids that have completed the program and continuing their post-secondary education. And I think that's pretty darn impressive, especially when over half of these kids are first generation college students. So, super proud of this program. We have ninety-eight students in it this year combined with our juniors and senior class. Um, and, um, frankly, I was told by UWGB, the Manitowoc Public School District accounts for one-eighth of all Rising Phoenix students in northeast Wisconsin. So, kudos to the board for being supportive of this program because it's truly changing the lives of our kids and families. And I would be happy to take any questions. Questions? That's it.
Lee, what was the, the biggest thing you've taken out of the Coffee and Conversation that you want to share with us?
That people care. They care about our school system. Um, we might talk about everything from, um, a fishing club. I usually turn that off. Uh, I, I do have school spirit, but. It's, uh, it is, um, you know, somebody came and, and said, you know, you're fish and wildlife people, we have this club, but it's all older people. How do we get younger people? Right? Example. There's people who want to know, how are you as a district going to achieve better results in learning? Um, there were advocates there from the Girl Scouts. How do we increase, uh, partnership with making sure that all of our kids at that age know that Girl Scouts is an option for their kid and that pro-social, again, something that is sort of school related, but it's a community organization. Um, folks wondering about taxes coming up, folks want, you know, so very wide range of things. But the big takeaway is that, and we've seen different people, it's not always the same people too, uh, is that the people in this community really do care about our district and want it to be successful. That's the biggest takeaway I've had.
Thank you.
Thanks. In, um, praise of, of Lee and how he's doing things, even the, the building projects in the district and the changes that will or will not be made. Um, he's really taken the step to involve the community in that process rather than just, this is what the board is doing. And, and that's important. The reality is the educational system in the Manitowoc Public School District belongs to the people of the community, so they should have some say and I appreciate that, that you've been doing. That's great. Directors' reports. I think we all got those. Do we have any presentation or any questions on that from the directors?
I don't have any questions.
To instructional round experiences are. On the first page, I, I always like, don't quite understand the esoteric stuff, so. Or the, or the, or the acronyms or something like, so.
It's when a teacher, the two teachers go together to observe instruction. And we're calling it instructional rounds because the expectation is that they see three people. So they're going to visit three different teachers and do some observing based on, um, what the priority is for the learning teacher, um, for things they want to see and notice.
Okay, that's good. Thanks.
I just, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. It's, to Lee and the directors, these reports are so detailed and so informative. I mean, it's, it's nice to have that come to us as board members. That wasn't an action in the past and it's so nice to have the information that comes from you guys. Thank you. It's very clear, it's very concise. And, um, I just think it's, it's wonderfully what is going on in this district, so thanks to all of you guys.
Any other questions on the director's report?
No, no.
Thank you very much.
Second one.
Sure.
New business. Curriculum Instruction Committee, David.
Um, we have to, um, approve the, the committee voted on and approved, um, Principal Michael Hoffman as the coordinator, um, record keeper for the early college credit program, the ECCP. Um, we need to vote on that.
I move we make Michael Hoffman.
You are moving then to make Mr. Hoffman?
I'm moving to make Mr. Hoffman the coordinator of the ECCP.
The committee does that.
Jerry.
If it's a committee recommendation, it's.
But you're bringing it to the board.
Bringing it to the board, yeah.
Okay, I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing say none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those saying nay? And please proceed, Mr. Bowman.
Um, I'm sure you all looked at the seclusion and restraint report. Um, and it's, the numbers actually are down from last, we're reporting on last year's, they're down from the previous year. Um, and if you look deeper into the numbers, you'll see that, I, I'm just gonna throw out a number, if there were fifty um, total things, it might have been fifteen students. So it was not a bunch of different kids. It's kids who we've, a lot of them are identified with certain disabilities that exacerbates problems. Um, but the overall trend is that those numbers are down. And I think that's, that's a good thing. I think plans that I'll be talking about in a minute will also help with that as well.
I would, I would just say that if, if we got rid of the MCCP program, it'd be down to almost nothing, wouldn't it?
And the, the value of the MCCP program is that's an opportunity for students who are really struggling in a typical school environment. To go and be in a space where they can focus very much on, um, behavior, uh, intervention and coping strategies so that students can then eventually get back into their traditional school setting. But many times, these, these students' disabilities manifest, um, very much in outward or physical behaviors and that's very disruptive to a classroom environment. And so we have teachers that are really specially trained to deal with that and then work with them to get them back into their traditional school setting, so. It's an incredibly really invaluable program to us and our teachers work very, very hard with really challenging students who just need to learn better coping strategies. They do a great job and I'm very grateful for the work that they do.
Any other questions? Let's see, David.
Hundred-day plan updates, uh, student achievement and learning outcomes. Um, one of the things that the district is really focusing on right now is, um, working at all levels to create high-functioning PLCs, professional learning communities. Um, and aligning language that people are using, aligning the way that they're, um, being observed. Um, working with administrative teams when they have a specific plan to go in and, and watch instruction. How do you talk about that? And, um, one of the things that I particularly liked, um, and this is something that I think we all need to think about is in, in terms of next steps, not in punitive ways, but here's, here's where you're at. Let's see where, how we move anybody to the next step. And I think that's, that's good language coming up. Um, training is ongoing for the ELA English Language Arts Curriculum that's being implemented at K-12. Um, they've had, my understanding is a vast amount of in-service on that. And, and I think this all ties into like helping, we have a lot of new administrative team members. We have a lot of new teachers. Giving them positive infor- informative feedback is gonna help maintain, as we all know, teachers. If they're not getting help, don't stay. Three years to five years, they're out before that, so this is all good. Middle school, they're working on aligning interventions, um, um, for reading deficiencies and working with all staff, establishing timelines and approaches to, um, interventions that are most successful. And having a grade line discussions to make sure that that all happens. Um, as far as, oh, anybody questions about student achievement and learning? No? Okay. Moving on to school culture and wellbeing, and I think we are sensing it in the community and people are sensing it in the community. Um, they've completed surveys, um, that review about SEL, social emotional learning, um, which allows us to identify student and staff perceptions of how the community is. When I, groups are identified within that community, there's, uh, different tiers of level or levels of MLSS. Level Systems of Support.
Finding the acronyms.
Yes, yes. I, I literally had to ask that one. And I've got a funny story about that, but that's not. As, as you were watching those kindergartners come into school, they have been practicing walking through the hallway. Here's how you do this. At each level, they're having different, um, instruction of how you actually function within a community. And I think the more that we understand each of us is part of that community, then when you, um, do the, um, restorative justice pieces, when you've broken that community, you, it's, it's more understandable. The kid already knows that here's how I should have been. I understand that I didn't live up to what the community expects from me. And I think the more that we hold each other accountable to that kind of thing, it can only be good for us. Um, and we'll see, and we have way back of reporting throughout the year to watch the trends. And I think this is data collecting at its finest use. Questions about school culture and what, oh, one thing that I really appreciated is they had a big discussion with all of the coaches at Lincoln.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
About how do we, how do we enable students to be involved in a lot of things? And I think that was well timed and well needed. Thank you.
Any questions for David? Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Moving on to.
Policy.
Personnel.
Mr. Trask.
Yes, yes, yes. I have, there are two things we need to take action on. One is that, uh, we've basically used up our allotment of paraprofessionals. And, um, you know, we, we get some, we get some unpredictable staffing situations that um, Stacy acted on and, and, and covered our, covered our needs. Um, but we do need, the recommendation from the Personnel Committee is that we do need an addition of two more slots. Additional slots of paraprofessionals, uh, positions on the staff, one for special ed and one for instruction, instructional, yeah, special ed and one for instructional. And I think the indication is, um, you have the, you have the memorandum of the costs of those two positions and, um, the, the, the work hours, et cetera, et cetera. I mean, nice detail. Um, but it is a, it's a, it's a need that we really can't pass, pass up and we have to, we have to, we have to. So, uh, the committee makes the nomin- uh, the, the recommendation.
I'll second it.
So I have a motion and a second to approve the two additional para-positions. Any discussion? When I looked at it, it was the para-position, the special ed, was a student who needed a para.
Correct.
And the other one I looked at, it was a larger classroom, which.
We have a building with some, an elementary building with some large classrooms, so.
So that, um, it's kind of good news when your classes are a little bigger than you expected, so.
I guess, yeah.
That's a, that's a good thing, so. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those saying nay? And it passes. Good, Mr. Trask.
Okay, and, um, Stacy has been busy, like, we've been busy with this policy stuff and the, uh, the handbooks, uh, both for professional staff and for, uh, support staff. We have a set of recommendations here for, for amendments, changes, uh, all of which the committee thought were greatly, uh, were greatly clarified, uh, things. Um, made things more efficient and certainly re- reflected a positive, had positive value and support of, of the professional staff. And at the very end, tightened up the penalties for late resignations, leaving us sort of like, you know, scrambling for, for, uh, to fill positions in a, in a, in a, in a world where it's pretty hard to get the people to fill positions. So, I, the committee again recommends that the, the changes to the professional handbook and the changes to the, uh, the support staff handbook, uh, be endorsed by the, by the, by the board.
Mr. Trask, you want to take those both, the same motion or do you want two separate motions?
If you think there's a need, I'd, I'd go with a.
I make a motion that we accept both of them.
Okay.
As approved by the Personnel Committee.
That's what I was suggesting.
So then we, so we'll go with your motion and a friendly amendment as a second to.
No, I think we did that as a committee too. We took them as one motion.
Yeah, one motion, yeah. Oh, you're gonna take them as one, okay. Um, so we have a motion and a second. And we will start with the professional staff.
And if there's any, any questions.
Any questions on that? You all had that in your board book notes before. Any changes?
Yeah, we even.
I'd like to say thank you for highlighting the change on each one.
Yeah.
That was very helpful.
I'd make it as possible for people.
Could we, could we make that first one retroactive to twenty twenty-four?
Nice try for you, boy.
I know, I can't vote on that anyway.
Hi, and I was at the meeting last night with this, was that last night? Yeah. This was discussed and it was pretty unanimous from everybody there from administration to the staff that these are good changes, so. Nice job, Stacy. Any other discussion on this? All right. All those in favor of the professional handbook changes, signify by saying aye.
I agree.
Oh, you, oh, that. You what?
One vote, two votes. Accept both of them.
Yep.
Yeah. Right.
All right.
We voted, right?
Yes.
Yes, I think we did. Okay.
On both of them.
On both of them, all right, okay. Okay, the last, the last thing from the committee, Personnel Committee, was the Recruitment Hiring and Retention Quality Staff Plan. Um, you know, I just want to say that, um, I for one, and I think it probably share the same, share the same, um, sense, is that Director Opali is, is like really stepped up really fast. And with amazing, with, you know, with amazing judgment and, and a lot of fairly intense work has got us off in a tremendously good, good shape, uh, in terms of, in terms of staff. And even, even, even having, you know, among all the hiring and the arranging, et cetera, et cetera, has, uh, brought up to date the, the, this, the, the, the staff, the staff and the professional staff and the, uh, staff handbooks and, and, and all of that. So, I'm really, I really have tremendous, tremendous confidence in, in, uh, the director's ability to like see us, see us through, uh, to a, to a, an even, an even better, an even better day. And, and certainly the, um, the recruitment, hiring and retention, that's something like, wow, this is something really needed. And I think the planning for it is, 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 is our, not only is the planning in, you know, a very good, very good plan, but, uh, she's already, she's already started to work on, on this business by attending job fairs and, and, and scheduling job fairs for the future, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh, we don't have to act on that, but I think, um, my, my sense is that, um, these plans are like, they're, they have the very positive endorsement of the committee. And I think they really do point in directions that we really, we not only need to go, but we're enthusiastically being, being led, led in that direction, step by step, by, by good thought and good planning. So if there are any questions about these plans?
I did ask, and you all got the response to the Lakeshore College. Just like to continue to advocate for those conduits to the trades.
Yeah, we have, I, if we met with them, they're going to get in touch with me this spring. We have field placement students coming from Lakeshore, Lakeshore Tech, the Lakeshore College. So we do have an active partnership agreement with them already, so continuing that. And I think youth apprenticeship is a, is a great conduit as well to the trades and even the areas in education that are those hard-to-fill places. You know, the tech ed, the business ed, the agriculture, the, you know, the, all those kind of things that are tough. It's giving kids experiences and continuing those partnerships. So it's really important to me, and I'll continue to do that work.
Any other discussion? Thank you, Mr. Trask.
Yep.
To bring us to other business remarks from the president, just a couple things. What you were just talking about with, if you think about it, you've got Rising Phoenix, you've got Lakeshore College, you've got the apprentice programs. That there seems to be a nice educational process going on for students who want to end up in any field, be it something related to college, being it something technology-wise, being it something that they need. And it seems that we have three programs that are helping them find out who they are and what they want to do after graduation. So I appreciate that. Just on the first days, I stopped in a few buildings, first couple days of school, and it's nice to see, it, it's, there's an energy that, that I'm seeing that I really enjoy. And it's, I don't know if that's part of being a former educator, that you get energy from kids and you see things going on, but it just seems that we're off to a good start, and hopefully we'll stay there and keep moving forward. Final thing I have is, is there was a recent, a recent social media post about the school board not being open and not sharing with the public things that we are doing. Every meeting we have is videotaped, and it's there on our website that you can pull down and watch. So one of the things I talked about early in this presidential endeavor was getting facts out when things are said that are not necessarily true. But the school district is very proud. We have a great young man back there who records everything, and it's on the web and it gets out. I think there's only one committee meeting that maybe there was a problem technology-wise with, but if somebody wants that, we'll get you minutes that will tell you everything that happened. So that is just a correction on that social media post. The other one is, there was another social media post, but I will be writing, I'll share that with you and send it to you. I'll be writing the differences in the misinformation that are posted and, and applying it. It had to do with money over the last couple of years, and, and this board really didn't have anything to do with a lot of the money in the last few years that was spent, or spent in different places. So we'll be just letting the public know that, and that's important because they have to trust what we're doing. We're doing a lot of good things, and they have to trust that what we're doing is right.
Correct.
So we have to set the record straight. So, that's all I got.
Yeah, that's good.
Other business. Future meeting dates, we have a meeting at the end of this month. Now, is that the same night? We don't?
No.
Not September, no. Okay, so then there, there is a meeting.
Just the WSB, the Fall Regional Meeting and Workshop. If any of the board members, I know some of you have reached out to me. If you do plan on attending both the, the meeting and the workshop, let me know if you're doing both of those or one of those, just so I know what to register you for, and so I can get a, get a count on that and so on and so forth. So yeah, just send me an email or whatever, just so I can get you registered, because I'll register you as a group.
Committee night will be Tuesday, October 7th. Or, I should say committee afternoon. Regular board meeting, the 14th of October. And then what we're looking at, and I talked to Biff a little bit about this, and Carrie had a conflict when we were looking to have a special meeting at the end of the month for the facilities. So I would ask the board to check their calendars for Thursday, October 30th, instead of Tuesday, the 28th, because Carrie will be out of town and he'd like to attend the meeting. And so if anybody has any conflicts on the 30th, which is a Thursday at 6:00, we can look for a different day, but if it works for everyone, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead and have that special facilities meeting on the 30th instead of the 28th.
I, I really appreciate you accommodating my, my name.
To set this, the, the meeting is, the, committee meetings are on October 2nd.
7th.
7th?
Yep.
Okay, and there is no meeting on the 23rd of this month?
No, we don't need a special meeting.
Okay.
We don't need that.
We're getting snow efficient.
I won't be able to be there on October 30th. I, we have a preview night for a show that opens, and I'm playing and directing the pit.
How about, are you back on the 29th?
Yeah, I'm back on the 29th.
It's a Wednesday, does, no, it's the same deal?
Same, same issue.
I guess you just do it.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you could do the meeting without me, I'll get the info, that'd be fine.
Okay.
I'll be sad to miss it.
Aren't you on finance?
Okay.
This is all about the facilities.
Yep, yep.
And this is, it means part of the facilities and finance.
No, this, this will be, it's a, it's a, it's a full board meeting. The, the, there'll be, the agenda item will be that we will do a presentation from the facility advisory committees around their recommendations.
Not my, not my committee, but.
Right, yeah. And in talking with Mr. Shaw, rather than doing the presentation through the committee, he wanted all of the board to have the opportunity to hear the same presentation on the same night. So we'll conduct.
That'll be recorded.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, and it's not like there's any decisions being made, it's information sharing. What we'll do, looking out beyond that, would be at the, the second month, or the second meeting of November, following up with some more details from our team around those recommendations. And so there'll be, it's information for sure.
Would it, would it be too late if we went into that first week in November, the same week as the committee meetings? Just thinking.
No.
To get, so if you wanted to.
I mean, yeah, once, once the show's rolling, I've got the whole week open.
What I could do is.
Why don't you send, you want to send out?
I'll send out a few dates. Yeah, we'll do that, because I got to make sure with Mike Hacker, too, that it works, so. I'll get a couple that work for him, and then we'll send them out this week.
Great.
Anything else for the good of the board?
It was only 7:00.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I have a motion and a second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those saying nay? And we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.
Maybe because they're so sure of what they're doing.
Because the committee is just.